Good morning. Welcome, everyone, to the Reno County Commission Chambers for our meeting Tuesday, October 11th. I'll call the media order and as usual, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and then a prayer. Today, the prayer is by Pastor Charles Crumble with New Resurrection Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Crumble?
Let us pray. Most holy and gracious Father, Lord, we come before your presence again on this day. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Lord, we just ask that you touch our hearts, Lord, that we be on one accord today. Lord, we ask you to bless the city, the county, and the public, state officials today. Lord, we ask you to bring us and draw us closer together, Lord, in transparency, and, Lord, and in your love, that everything be grounded and done decently and in order. Lord, and we just thank you and bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Again, welcome, everyone, to the meeting today. I don't have any announcements ahead of the meeting. Is there anyone here for public comment not on the agenda today? Seeing none. Does the commission have any additions or revisions to the agenda?
I have none.
No.
Randy?
No.
Okay. Seeing no revisions, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, items 6A through 6E.
Second?
Commissioner Sellers moves. Commissioner Hurst seconds for approval of the full consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I did have a question on 6E. I see the Health Department directors here. If I read part of that Beaumont Impact document correctly, you need a business partner for this grant.
Yes, sir.
And is that something that you'll decide later if you get the grant, or do you have, or is that something you don't want to talk about at this point?
I think we have options in our mind. We have reached out to the chamber, but we also needed your approval first, and then we will be working on that the next several days as far as partnering with businesses. The good thing about this grant is it's very open, so we can give them our thoughts on that application, on what we're going to do with the grant, and then we can establish those partners also, as we know that we received that grant.
So if you receive the grant, there might be more than one partner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Probably, actually, it would be preferred to have four. So, at least one, but preferred to have four.
Okay.
Yes.
And do you have any feel for the potential success of this?
That's the unknown, but that's the happy unknown. I think the success will be in having those dialogues with businesses on-
No, I mean the ability to receive the grant.
We do not. We do not. They have a very fast timeline. I think this was actually put out last week, received Randy's approval to put it on the agenda, and the closing date is next Friday. So it's a very fast timeline. I think they're just seeing how adaptive businesses can be in that application. So I think that's part of the first hurdle, is to get that application in on time-
Okay.
And have a good application.
Very good.
No, do not.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no further questions, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Frazel?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to business items. I know Commissioner Hurst is sensitive to moving items.
I agree with this one.
Okay. I was hoping we can move the district attorney out. Is that okay?
Like I said, I agree with this one.
So, hearing no objection, we'll move item 70 at the top of the list, so the district attorney can get back to the good work he's doing for the people of the county.
Thank you. I submitted a report. It's pretty lengthy. It's pretty specific. Things are going pretty well in my office. The constant issue that we have is being able to hire, and we're now short an attorney. We've had, we put it out on Indeed and a couple other sites, and have received absolutely no applications at this point. But that's not unusual these days in the legal field, either on the public or the private side. So there are several reasons for that. The most likely is that about four or five years ago, the law schools decided we were putting out too many attorneys, so they cut their enrollment. And now, with people retiring, we don't have enough attorneys to go around. And that's not, it's affecting offices all over the state, both prosecution and defense. So it's just a matter of finding the right person. I'm going to a conference in next week for the KC DAA, Kansas County District Attorney's Association, and I'll see how many, if I can poach somebody from somebody else's office while I'm there. That's about the best I can do right now.
What, is it pay, or just supply?
I checked. You know, we're kind of in the middle on the pay. There are some places that pay quite a bit higher than us, and I've noticed that there are a couple of counties that are still quite a bit lower than us. Obviously, they're going to have a more difficult time bringing in an attorney. But to a certain extent, it is the pay. But it's, but we're not terribly out of line with our starting pay. And I can also, you know, give people a little bit more if they've got experience. So it's not primarily the pay. It's just a lack of quality and qualified applicants right now.
Tom, would you speak just briefly about your paragraph in here about the potential new initiative of, I believe, diversion for first-time drug offenders?
Sure.
That sounds new, and the public might like to hear about what's happening.
It is fairly new. Last year, the Kansas Legislature passed a statute that allows for collaboration and cooperation and cooperation between myself and Community Corrections to set up a diversion program for first-time felony drug offenders. I've never been really in favor of diversion for the simple reason that we can't get people treatment normally on diversion. But this program would allow us to get the treatment that people need. The way the system works is if I could, if my office convicts somebody right now of first-time drug offense, they automatically go to Community Corrections for supervision. So the level of supervision that they would get on a diversion would be the same as they would get under conviction. And so if we could take someone who doesn't have a record, this is their first time, and we can get them the treatment that they need, and get them back on the straight path, and get them back to the point where they are being able to function normally in the community, then that's a win for everyone. First of all, then we don't have to deal with them on second, third, and fourth time convictions. The community is better off because we're dealing with the issue without jail sanctions and without spending public monies to try to incarcerate people. They're also better off because there would be less, ideally, there would be less crime in the community, because people would not be needing to steal to supply their habit. And if they get through diversion, then they are more employable, because they don't have to disclose a conviction. So at this point in time, it looks to me like a good option for first-time drug offenders. And the kind of treatment they would get in diversion would be equivalent to what they would get if they were on Community Corrections after a conviction.
And is this possible due to additional state funding for this diversion work?
Well, it's, that's going to be the question, of whether or not the state's going to help fund it. The bottom line is, the state would be funding this treatment under any circumstances, because if, once they get convicted and they're in Community Corrections, the state would be funding it. So there is state funding for this. The one thing that they don't have that I wish they had was a similar program when we're talking about people with mental health issues. And I've talked to our legislators about the possibility of looking at this statute and doing something similar when it comes to mental health, because right now, that's a big issue in our community. But I think it's a win. It's a win for us, because people get an opportunity to get through their addiction without, and deal with their addiction without a conviction, and it's good for the community. So I'm working on that with Randy Reger. That would start, I hope, January of '24, because I've got to make sure that everything is budgeted. I don't have anything in the budget for '23. And I don't even know that it's going to be an increase in my budget to do that, but I have to look at it, and we're going to go through the planning stages.
I have one other question, and it refers to your document that you submitted for this item, and it also refers to monthly department reports that this item is in. And it's the last paragraph of your document that you need the ability to store and disseminate discovery in your cases, and this is a $3,800 expense that you don't have budgeted for next year.
Well, right. And the reason for this, this goes back several years to the judicial branch and the Office of Judicial Administration deciding that they're going to change our software. So we are going from full court to Odyssey. Part of that, the budgetary issue is that Odyssey, because in order to use that software and make it the most efficient possible, we needed to buy a prosecutor program that works with Odyssey. And so we spent, we spent almost the entire budget on that initial contract this year. The discovery process, as it occurs now, is we buy, we buy a lot of disks and thumb drives, and we put all the discovery on the thumb drives. And we put those thumb drives then in our files for the prosecutors, so that when they get ready to do a trial, they have everything in one place. We're not printing it out, we're putting it on thumb drives. What this idea is, instead of putting it on a thumb drive, we'd have a dedicated server, and we would download everything into the server, and then prosecutors would access the server. So that's going to save us, in the long run, a lot of expense when it comes to buying thumb drives. We buy a lot of thumb drives, because we not only have to put them in our files, and we give some of that discovery to defense on thumb drives. So it will ultimately save us quite a bit of money if we can just put it on our server and have our prosecutors access the server. The problem is KC just makes, you know, requires that it be a dedicated server that only IT and prosecutors' offices have access to. And so we're working with Mike to try to get that done. That 30, we believe that that $3,800 expense, when we are able to expend that money, which is not that, you know, we're talking January, we'll be able to not only make our process more efficient and save time, but we'll save the county money on those expenses.
Okay, so you're saying you can do that in 2023?
We can do it in '23. We couldn't do it in 2022.
Okay, I think I misread that. I think I felt like that you weren't even going to be able to do it next year.
No, we've spent, we've spent our budget this year. We'll be able to do it right after the first year.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hurst?
A very good, complete report.
And you did make note of the continued work up there on the fifth floor. Appreciate your patience on that. Are we doing-
Well, I'm anxious to see what happens today if we get the plans approved and they go out to bid, so construction can actually start. But yes, I'm patiently waiting for that to occur. And right now, I have, I decided to take people out of that one office on the fifth floor, and they're above us on the second floor mezzanine right now, because we just, we were having too many water problems. Now, I haven't seen any, I didn't see any yesterday with the small amount of rain that we had yesterday, and I'm hoping that since they're putting the roof back on, and my understanding is you're going to be also having that roof repaired up there, that we won't have any more water problems, and I'll be able to move my staff back upstairs. And so I'm really anxious about getting all my staff all put together in one office.
Since you brought up that, I was going to ask later on, but you've looked at the plans, and the meeting room is sufficient size for you up there in the DA's office. That was the one thing I just saw on the plans.
Yeah, we've had several, we've had several meetings. All we really need is a conference room. Right now, the conference room that we use has two people in the office. It's the largest office we have, and it's, we have, our conference table is in with our discovery clerk and one of my attorneys. And so trying to have meetings in there is difficult, because we're bothering them, and sometimes they've got that, they've got that room reserved for something they're doing, and we don't have any place to have a conference. So especially when it comes to victims and being able to pull victims aside, it's going to be big enough for what we, for what we need for the most part. There will be cases that I have, I've got a couple of cases with multiple victims and witnesses right now, that probably I'll still need to reserve the veterans room to have meetings for.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving back up to 7A. Randy, do you want to lead this conversation?
Sure. Then I'll turn it over to Harlan. This agenda item is, we've been talking about this for, I think about the past year and a half, maybe, the courthouse space renovation to kind of make more space. And really, the initial need was the fifth floor for the district attorney. As he had just mentioned, they didn't have a conference room, and they have attorneys on the fourth floor and the fifth floor. The plans here would move everyone of the DA up to the fifth floor, renovate what was the original jail, make office spaces there, still have some storage space there, a conference room. And then the fourth floor, between the fourth and fifth floor, there's going to be a stairway that's going to be built on that side of the courthouse. And then the third floor, there's a, an additional jury room, I believe is what it is, is that for district court, that district court had requested. The second floor is, we're going to move what is Kansas, I kind of went blank on the-
Legal Services?
Legal Services, thank you, Harlan. Legal Services on the second floor that's there right now, they're going to move up to the fourth floor where the DA's attorneys are that are moving to the fifth floor. That space is going to be renovated to have an office and a small conference room, and then connect a catwalk from that side of the second floor over to the mezzanine to allow for office space or cubicle space over right above us on the mezzanine. Initially, I think we'll move IT to that second floor for now, and giving space down in the basement, possibly for the sheriff's office, to move people from the drug unit over to closer to the sheriff's office. And then the first floor, this floor, we will renovate office spaces in this area to move Patrick, the county councillor, and his assistant over to this area, part of this room, and part of, and where Lori, the communications office, is right outside, right by this hallway, make office spaces here. And then the, I guess it was originally the General Reno Conference Room, will go back to being a conference room, we'll move the conference table that's out here in the open area back into the conference room. And then that office where Patrick is at will be kind of an open office. The thought was moving Commissioner Hurst's office over there, and make it available for any time a commissioner wants to come in and meet. They can come, plug in their laptops, tablets, and meet with constituents, and that, and we'll have a scheduling set up, so that no more than two commissioners are over there at one time, once there's five commissioners. That's kind of the overview. The GLMV had prepared the bid documents, and wanted to get, we wanted to get it out to bid, so that we could still bring it back this year, since we've been working on it, and it has budget authority this year, and from last year, in reserves. So we were wanting to get that taken care of. Brad from GLMV's here, and Harlan, probably to give a little bit more details, or answer any questions. Harlan, did you have anything in addition?
Great summary.
Oh, thank you. Brad, did you have anything you want, or questions?
Available for questions.
Available, okay.
Yes, I have a question for Brad, please, if you come to the podium. We have money in reserve, budgeted for this upgrade to the courthouse. My concern is that with inflation that's going on, and construction costs and all, that we might not be able to do all that Randy just suggested. I don't want to delay sending this out for bids, but is there somewhat of a simple way to maybe get a total bid and some breakdowns, such that if we're 75% over budget, we make some educated decisions of what is most important, which is the fifth floor, and coming down from there?
Sure. The project itself is, I think, has apparent places where those divisions could be made. Like, one of the areas would be the fifth floor and the stairs.
Right.
Another area would be the walkway connecting the mezzanine to the front second floor area. And then maybe the third area would be some of the renovation works. But we'd have to do a little bit of study to make sure that we're not, you know, dislocating one group, you know, because they do interplay to some degree, so there'd have to be some study. But I am confident that we could make some accommodations to bids that were, you know, in excess of what our anticipation was.
So, Brad, are you suggesting that we put this out as presented, and then negotiate with the low bidder?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, to get the real number for all of it, and then negotiate with them to see if there are apparent things that could be pieced off of it. Okay.
I have, I looked at the plans. I didn't read them thoroughly, because I probably wouldn't understand it all anyway. But I was, I'd like to hear a little discussion on the options for HVAC systems. I see we're locating some systems up on top of the roof of the fifth floor. And have we, I guess I was, do we just look at what we really are familiar with, or we look at options there of new things that are coming around?
We explored about a half a dozen different, correct me if you disagree, but I think it was about a half a dozen different options, and we explored them with our engineers, lengthy discussions on that. And many of those discussions were pretty technical, but I am confident that we have come up with an option that serves the county's needs, is cost-effective, and would be a long-term solution for heating and cooling of the entire building, especially during the seasonal changes, when some of those systems are uncomfortable for people that are using the building. The system that I believe that we are proposing here for this is a result of those lengthy discussions.
Would it be both gas and electric?
It would be gas and electric, if that's correct. Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't make it out of the drawings exactly what it was, except I noticed there's some hot water heating and so forth.
We've had some significant challenges with electric service and getting it from the service entrance to where it needs to go, and those have been some significant challenges. But we've accomplished that.
Noticed it looks like you're building a new stairway from the fourth and the fifth, the third and fourth, or fourth and fifth floor.
Right. The fourth, for egress out of the fifth floor, out of that underutilized space that now we're going to be putting the offices in, that stairs will provide egress to the fourth floor, but it will not provide egress out of the building. So we're improving life safety, but the stairs that we are providing, we've run past the city reviewers, and although it's not code compliant, it is an improvement upon what we have for egress out of the building and out of that space. we have for egress out of the building and out of that space. We have issued these plans for the state historic preservation people's review and we are in the process of issuing them to the city for their plan review. As of this morning, that had not been done yet, though.
Question to county administrator, are the files that are presently in the new area on the fifth floor, are those now out of the way so this can be accomplished? And if not, will they be in time?
They will be in time. I'm, I'm not sure, Harlan, are they pretty much out of there?
There's still a lot out there. Most of the, most of those documents have been, been through and relocated by the, everyone other than the courts and the district attorney. But, but yeah, they're, everyone's aware that, that they're going to need to be relocated and I think they have plans in place to do that.
You're comfortable that that's not going to hold the project up?
I don't believe so.
It's had a long time to get those out of there.
Some departments have taken, have already done that, there are, there's just a lot of files up there, but we have talked with district court and other departments to find alternative spots. And we'll, we'll make sure that happens so that the fifth floor can be first part of the project.
I think it's important, one, that all of the local contractors here in the county are notified of any, either main or general or sub, that they are notified of the opportunity to bid when this time comes, because sometimes that hasn't happened. And I think it's absolutely imperative that that happens. And I'd also encourage you to look at any cost-saving things that could be utilized here, like maybe just an example of fire-rated paint in place of double doing things. And so whether that's efficient or not, I don't know, but I'd encourage you just to look at all different things that could happen, rather just solely relying, just have plenty of questions.
Okay, hearing no further questions, is there a motion to approve the unauthorized bid documents to be distributed for a remodel of the courthouse spaces?
I would still move.
Commissioner Hurst moves, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sellers, any final discussion on this?
I think the district attorney has been most patient on this process. He's had significant issues of doing his business in a manner which we should have fixed long, long ago. We need to get these bids and get that fifth floor done.
Agree.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen.
Yes. Motion passes three to zero. The next item on the agenda is a, consider approval for bid documents for roof repairs.
Good morning, Commissioners. Harlan Depew, Maintenance and Purchasing Director. This is kind of a dovetails, I guess, with this remodel project and the, in the exterior work that we've been doing on the courthouse. The, the roof on the west side over the fifth floor is where, where the district attorney's offices is currently, was budgeted for this year to be replaced anyway. And then we had planned to do the east side next year, that was in, so that's been in our CIP plan for some time. Considering the pending remodel and, and all the work being done up there and the work that has been done, I think it's, it's prudent that we do everything we can to make sure we don't have any additional water leaks or minimize that chance as much as possible up in that area. So after looking at the budget, we had, we had planned to do the health department this year, but it's in, in good condition still and, and we had our local roofing contractor take a look at it and, and they believe that it's got several more years of, of good service left on that roof. So our proposal is to reallocate those funds or redirect the funds that we were intending to use for the health department and get these sections re-roofed here as soon as we get Piscine off the roof and can get that out to bid. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Either a question to you or to Brad, what type of roof material is on these two areas now and what's anticipated to be specified?
Do you want to address that? Or, I mean, it's, it's a modified bit roof is what we're, what's up there now.
With ballast.
With ballast, correct. And that would be what we intend to go back with. The, the section on the front is currently a rubber roof and I think we, we're going to go back with mod-
EP, I was-
We're going to, yeah, okay.
We were talking about using an APM, but that's not been resolved yet. We were talking about with the roofing contractors to see what materials might be available and so they recommend. We haven't decided yet what that would be because we're trying to make sure that we use materials that are readily available as opposed to getting caught in the, the supply chain delays. So that, that front part not been decided yet.
Okay.
No offense to you, Brad, but why are we using an architect to replace a roof?
A lot of that has to do with just the, well, first of all, historical society up in Topeka, if we're, if we're using, if we're applying for tax credits on it, there's a certain process that we need to go through and, and have the drawings and all of that done to where they can review and approve in order to qualify for those tax credits would be one major portion of that.
Do the tax credits offset architectural cost of 9,750?
Yes, I believe they would in this project.
So they would?
Yes.
Not just believe they would, they would?
They would.
Okay. That answered my question, thank you.
Are those tax credits a guarantee or are they competitive or?
No, on this type of a project, they, they are guaranteed under the current rules as long as the project is approved in advance by, by the historical, Kansas State Historical Society.
And what is, what do you mean by tax credit? Because we don't pay taxes.
We don't get them, but the state will issue the tax credits and then we put out a request for proposals and sell it to companies, individuals that want to buy them. And then that's a competitive process that the commission approves of.
Fifty, 50%, 75%?
The, the tax credit, as it currently stands, is 40% of the total project. And then typically, what we've seen in the past is they'll sell for anywhere from 85 to 90% of the actual face value.
Good.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement with GLMV for the bid documents for roof, for the roof, Reno County courthouse roof?
Still move.
Motion by Sellers.
Second.
Second by Hurst. Final discussion.
We need to solve any leakage problems that we have here.
Agreed. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes three to zero. Harlan?
So the next item is the bid documents for the re-anchoring the facade around the tower of the building. During the earthquake repairs and the restoration of the dome, it was discovered that many of the anchors that originally held the limestone facade to the building structure had deteriorated over time and were either severely deteriorated or in some cases completely missing. You've all been involved with lengthy discussions on that in the past, so I won't go into a tremendous amount of detail at this moment, but the recommendation from our engineer, Brandon England, a structural engineer, has been heavily involved with this project. His recommendation, the recommendation of our architects and our recommendation would be to go ahead and install new anchors on the tower portion of the building to protect it from more long-term damage, just to minimize additional movement of the limestone over time, which deteriorates the, the masonry or the, the mortar between the stones. And also, you know, in the event of another earthquake, would, would certainly help to minimize the, the damage in the future. Our intent would be to, let's see, yeah, our, our intent would be to probably not put this out to bid until early next year, mostly for budgetary reasons. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes.
I, I'm going to start because I want to try to frame up a few items here. The, but part of this goes back to a disagreement amongst our engineers and our insurers' engineers and what is required or what is needed. My understanding was our insurance, our insurers' engineers don't necessarily agree with the need to anchor, is that true?
I think that's, that's partially true. None of them indicated that it was a bad idea to do that. I think as, as Mr. England had indicated, the engineers that were hired to review this by the insurance company, they were hired, I guess on some level, to determine whether or not anchoring the facade would be covered under the policy. And so from that standpoint, they were saying there's no code reasons why it has to be upgraded or, or done. But, and, and the one out of California, WJE, their conclusion kind of was it, it survived two fairly significant earthquakes without any total structural failure and without the facade falling off of the building, so therefore in the future it, it should survive more. That's kind of where they left it.
So my next question would be, are these solely for an earthquake event?
Brad, do you want to answer that?
The ties have deteriorated over time and so currently the existing building is not the building that it used to be. And so the ties themselves are, that are being restored are largely to bring the building back to, closer to the way it used to be as opposed to continuing, continuing to let it deteriorate. It does impact earthquake, I mean, it, but it's, it's more than just earthquake, it's, it's maintenance of, of, of a building that-
Well, what are the ties used for? I mean, I understand the anchor, but why do they, why are they needed?
The, the purpose of the tie is to keep the veneer from disconnecting from the superstructure. The veneer itself, if it's not connected, will, over time, begin to move, separate from the superstructure. If it goes long enough without being maintained, those veneers can fall off the building.
All right, is it separating now?
There have been, yes. There are places that we've observed that are starting to bulge or out of plane with the, the plane of the veneer. And that's what was noted, that's what we discovered during the construction process. The contractor said, we see some bulging. We repaired some of that bulging in the replacement of the dome. We brought the engineers out from California and Florida, I think it's the two locations where they came from, and they observed the bulging as well. They, although some of that displacement is very small, hard to see, it's, there is motion going on. So the tip, the purpose of the tie is to keep the veneer and the superstructure tied together.
But was, was the bulging the result of an earthquake?
It's possible and-
And how long have the anchors, I mean, you have no idea how long they've been deteriorated?
I'm, I'm sure it's been the, the over, it's been over the length, the duration of the, the age of the building.
Okay.
And-
And we've, what do we budget for next year for this?
I believe there's 200,000.
Okay. And, and it was expected more like, was it 600 or something?
There was, I think, it was seven or eight, I mean, it was a lot higher. We're going to do a lot more of the facade of the anchoring originally.
Right. And so it's, it's been kind of looked at in increments as to what are the most severe areas that need to be addressed first? Do we do all of it? Do we do some of it? If we start at the top and work down, we'll be capturing the most important things first because the failure starts at the top.
Okay. One, one last question and then I'll let other commissioners ask theirs. Do you have a timeline as to how long it will, you know, I, I know we know now we, there's some deterioration. Is this a multi-decade-long process before it deteriorates further? Like, how do we estimate how long we have?
Boy.
Can you watch it? I mean, is it something you can watch annually?
It can be measured. There are methods of measuring the movement that's going on over time.
And is it, is it at a condition today that risks life safety in this building or around the building?
I don't believe life safety is at risk right now.
Okay.
We are bringing it to your attention.
That's what I need to clarify. Hurst?
Rather than, I understand where you're coming from, life safety, this is more of a cost, maintenance cost, prevention over time, would you say, to secure that?
I, yes.
And I think the one, six or 700,000 or a million, whatever it was, that included lots of anchors that I don't think any of us thought were worthwhile because they were going into clay rather than in something serious that would hold it. And that, I'm sure, was all determined that that was not necessary, Harlan. And so my, I'm, I'm in favor of doing some of this, but what I am questioning, we've got, if I remember right, we saw a lot of engineers' drawings on this already. And here again, I'm being tight, okay? But is, is this necessary? Is this another thing that comes under the historical society? Wish you'd quit nodding your head yes, Harlan. You want to, you're spending money all the time. Yeah, okay. But I think some, some minimum work in that budget category that we've set aside for it is probably a good, sound thing to do to lessen maintenance cost in the future as much as anything, to hold the grouting in place so that that movement, even slight, will cause some not connecting, tightening, loosening up, if you would, or not fully connected to the grout. That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
I've got two questions. Brad, is the use of putting these ties in through the existing grout an appropriate engineering method to, to me, the grout would be the weakest link of the whole system, but the grout tied into the block is appropriate?
Yes. Right now, the ties are anchored in the grout. So, we, so the only change would be the type of tie that we would be using. So, it would still be moving through the grout. We're still using the grout as a method of connecting...
Did you see my question?
I do.
The grout tied into the block and all is a total system?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, currently, it's, the ties are anchored in the grout as well.
Okay. My final question goes to Building Maintenance. Our yard has been in terrible condition for two years now due to this work on the dome. Would approving this project in the future create the yard being deteriorated again?
That's a possibility. However, this work could be done, depending on which contractor does it and how they choose to proceed. First of all, it will be a lot quicker. It should happen within, I mean, I think this is a couple-month project at the most, and so, there shouldn't be the same kind of ongoing destruction of the landscape there. I do know that it could be possible that they could use the, I'm not sure what the appropriate name is, but they have in the past used these baskets that they lower over the side of the building instead of using heavy equipment from the ground and going up, and that could be inappropriate.
You understand my concern is that our overall look of our yard has been in awful condition.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you're ready to fix that.
Absolutely.
So, that'd be a consideration.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve this document with the architect to proceed to make this bidable.
Commissioner Sellers moves to approve item 7C through second. Second by Commissioner...
I'll second him.
First.
Got one question when we get done with this.
Is this on this topic?
Yes.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Sellers brought up a point. Going into the grout versus going into a block. Could you explain why the grout is necessary? I didn't quite catch all of that, I think, rather than going into the blocks themselves?
Sure. I will, I'll address that, and then let Brad chime in as well. There's a lot of blocks up there, and to go through the block and into the concrete behind it would require drilling through every one of those stones at least twice, countersinking an anchor, and then patching over the top of that, that new anchor. We're talking at least a couple thousand anchors, and that means a couple thousand patches. If those patches, or when those patches pop out, which they will tend to do over time, now we have another point of ingress or ingress for water to get in behind those stones. That's why I prefer the grout method. I do think that, in my mind, although I'm not an engineer, in my mind, it seems like going through the stones would be more solid and substantial, but I also would be concerned about that many holes through all of these stones with little thin patches over the top of the anchors deteriorating over time.
We can accomplish the task either way, either through the mortar or through the perforations of the stones. As much as the contractor might promise that those patches would be invisible, the materials that they actually use are different than the material that they're coring through, and so, time will allow those materials to weather differently, and so, it'll be an aesthetic thing where you'll see those patches, where if you go through the mortar, those patches would remain invisible.
Brad, one more question for you, or two. In your, if we agree to this, in your process, can you provide us, like, a phases of conditions? Like, how, like, could you tell us, like, okay, it's in kind of this phase of condition today? You know, the next phase would be kind of deteriorating to a point where, you know, may need, you know, we may need to make immediate improvements, and the next phase would be, you know, something where, well, the whole thing could fall down. Is there a way to give us some? And my second question is, can you provide some, like, a measurement process to where we could monitor?
Over time?
Yeah.
On a regular basis?
Like, you could say, well, you know, once it's this far, you know, your hands are tied, you know. I'm looking at whether there's a, in your engineering analysis, whether you could create something that gives us some time to where we watch it?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna start with the second question first.
Okay.
The second question, as far as measuring it, there are tools out there available that you can put measuring tools on the building, and then that change in movement, or the movement, can be observed. And some of that can be observed into very small, small amounts. And I don't see why there'd be any problem with attaching, say, monitors at a high level and a lower level, so that you can see the difference in the movement if it's happening more at the upper level and less at the bottom level. And that can be monitored over time. As far as, I think an engineer would need to be consulted to determine if there are phases in the process of when it, you know, kind of, the point of no return, I think is kind of what you're saying. At what point do we need to address it? Is that kind of the question?
Yeah, I think it's more scientific than just saying, oh, it's, there's cracks or, oh, there's movement.
Yeah.
If an engineer were to say, "This is actually not anything to worry about today."
Yeah.
You know, "We recommend you watch it yearly until..."
Sure.
"...this point occurs." That could save us $800,000.
I'm struggling with an answer to your question.
Could you ask an engineer?
Yes, I could, absolutely, I could do that.
Well, that would be my only caveat. If we're gonna approve this, I would like it to be subject to an engineer's opinion on the, you know, rather than just saying, "Oh, it looks bad," I'd like an engineer to say, "Yeah, it needs to be..."
Right.
I guess we have that, kind of, it's just, it seems like we have differing opinions.
Brent, yeah. Brent England has spoken and addressed this issue before, and he may already have an answer to that question. And I apologize for not having that answer for you this morning.
Commissioner, I believe that when our engineer was here, he thought that we could do that for somewhere in that category, what we had budgeted, to do a sufficient job, rather than the whole 700 or 800,000. I think he was talking to probably do this for in that 200 to 250,000, at that time, if I remember Brent correctly.
Right. And if I remember correctly, we had broken this project into three categories, the uppermost, the lower, and then the whole thing. And so, I think we had proposed that we do the most egregious part of it first, which was the part that was highest up, and that the other portions of it could be monitored over time. Do you have a similar memory of that?
Is that gonna be in the bid documents?
Yes. Well, the bid documents, as I was putting this proposal together, was only for the most egregious part, which was the uppermost part of that. And, I mean, that's what my proposal was proposing on. And...
I think, I'm not particularly satisfied, given the differing opinions between the engineers on this. Nobody can really say whether this is a five-year problem or a 50-year problem. Can you, Brad?
It's hard to quantify.
I feel like that should be question one, like, solve, solve the dispute between the engineers before we start fixing things, especially given it doesn't appear as though this is an urgent matter.
Well, the engineer that we've used locally for some period of time for courthouse work has said that we need to do some degree of repair.
Some degree of anchoring.
And so, I think, to me, you've already got your answer. You know, a bit like repairing your car, you're not exactly sure when the transmission's gonna go out, but at some point in time, it's gonna happen.
What's the engine, what's your estimate of this? Like, do you have a budgetary number of what this is gonna come out to be?
I think in my proposal, the top portion of the anchors that we were addressing was a construction cost of $75,000.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That is correct. And so, the first estimates that we got were from the contractor that's currently working on the building. I did contact another contractor out of Wichita who's done work on this building before, and they gave us an estimate of way lower than that.
Okay.
So, and while I'm here, I do happen to have Brent England's summary on this from back in May when he spoke with you all at that time about this. And I'd like to just read a little bit of that, if that's okay with you.
Well, I think, I think we know where he's at. I mean, if the other commissioners need that for the decision, I think we're ready to vote on it.
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing that up, but if this was a $750,000 decision, I'd have a little different opinion, but I think we're ready to vote.
I would too, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes. Thank you, Harland. Appreciate it. And if you feel like we should read that, just shoot it over to Randy, and we'll make sure we get it read. Sorry to interrupt you there, just trying to keep a schedule. Proposals for consultant work, Reno County. Randy?
This is, as we discussed at the last meeting, staff has concerns with the level of details and knowledge about federal funds and the ARPA, or SL, or SLP, local revenue, so the SL, FRF funds, which is for the local government, that we have generalized experience in this, but felt that if we could find a consultant that would be able to, they've done this with other cities and counties and do this all the time, they have the legal knowledge, the accounting background of dealing with reports, that we would be better off using a consultant, with this being $12 million worth of funds that will get, obviously will be audited, but then, in future years, I think we have to hold on to the records for like, six years, and eight years from now, the federal government may come and check on something. We would hate to have missed something by not having experts look at, kind of oversee some of our work. Now, the proposals we received were based on an RFP that was sent out for the, as if we had not done any work. So, it was a copy of other RFPs that cities and counties have used. So, the amounts that came in were, I think, far more than what we would actually use, and they were both not to exceed amounts, though I think the one group did have it at 3.92% of our total allocation of the 12 million. The other group, iParametrics, had, they billed hourly based on the services provided, up to no more than 300,000. But, looking at their proposal, again, this was part of, from the request for proposals, it talked about having public meetings and setting up, finding out what the community and the commission wanted from the beginning, we're past that stage. So, that's why we still, staff recommends going with iParametrics, and work, this is also the company that the city of Hutchinson currently contracts with. Some of the projects, housing, or maybe some housing, and the childcare, may have similar recipients. Having a consultant that's doing both entities' work, they have better oversight to make sure that we're not, I guess, double spending, double allocating ARPA funds to the same, for the same service. The contract, we would expect this also to help write contracts with the outside agencies, so then, we ensure that we're not double paying for administrative work, that's the same administrative work, if that makes sense. Because some of the agencies had administrative work included in their fee or their estimated cost. This is also administrative work. We would, they would be different administrative works. If there was any overlap, we would not be paying for that twice. We wouldn't be paying a consultant plus the outside entity, the agency, such as Interfaith House.
How much was the contract from the city of Hutch? You know?
I don't know that.
This is way too much, in my opinion. I think we budgeted like 30,000 or 40,000?
137,000 for audits and administrative work. We would, if you want to set a cap, we can work with that also, if you're willing to. We really just need some of the upfront work. We may not need stuff all the way through.
This is just the really bad part about getting free money is, it just creates overhead. I real, I, I would hope we wouldn't, not exceed the number we budgeted. I felt like that was too much already. I think we had a debate on it, and that's where we settled. So, I'm not gonna argue that number again, but I would argue something higher than that. And I feel like you guys are a long ways down the road, and I would prefer you manage to the budget we've set, not to exceed that number myself.
I think that we need to cap what the county has allotted in our discussion of what we agreed on, and all of the other agencies have put in a, I expect, an amount for administration anyway. So, in case that would necessitate going over that 137,000, then I would suggest that the agencies that have already allotted funds for admini- then I would suggest that the agencies that have already allotted funds for administration, that any over that comes out of those funds that they have allocated because they made this necessary to exceed the amount that we put. You understand what I'm going from?
So, what you're suggesting could be in the documents with that agency?
Yeah.
I think that's a reasonable...
In case they didn't keep adequate records in that agency that caused our auditors to exceed that amount, then they would be responsible, and that would come out of their funds. Does that make...
I think that's a reasonable approach. I think what you're suggesting keeps it within the limits that Daniel wants to stay within. And as the county administrator said, that he feels at this point that the costs will be substantially lower than the maximum. And I would think that since we're working with the city of Hutchinson on some of these things, there's no need for double billing there. So, I'm willing to approve the document with the discussion that's been here today, that we work towards not exceeding the allocation that we previously made.
Okay, so, would you make a motion to approve iParametrics at the originally budgeted amount? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. Any final discussion on that? Randy, are you, can you make that work?
Yes, in fact, I'm hoping it's even less than that amount. So, because that's for audit and consultant work. So, I'll work with Leslie and Patrick and the company to make sure that we spend as little as needed, but only use the necessary services to keep it under that amount.
So, our point, people, are still you, Leslie, and Patrick?
Yes. Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I think it's just important that we have got a cap on it. And that if the other agencies haven't done sufficient work or consult with a consultant or whatever, that then, any additional expenses to be in compliance, that comes out of their share that they've allocated to administration.
Do you have any knowledge of, gosh, when we can allow these people to start spending this money? To me, we've taken too long to get to this point. And I understand some of the concerns that you and Patrick have, and now we're addressing those. But to me, with inflation, a dollar spent today has more value than a dollar spent a year and a half from now. So, can we get moving on this thing?
Yes, for the housing, we can probably, they can do a lot of the background work. And, I mean, because they wouldn't start the construction yet. Anyways, they can start meeting with people. We should have an agreement, assuming this gets passed in a couple minutes here, that we should be able to get iParametrics onboard contracts pretty quick. And then, now, like, United Way, K Ready, they're still waiting, I think, on their report from K State. So, they're not ready to spend the money yet, as far as I know. The other agencies that have received money or allocations, the county ones have started that process. But Interfaith and SCAD are the ones, they can do background work right now, but we'll have an agreement with them in the next couple months, so that they can...
So, could we have Interfaith come in at a meeting in the near future and tell us what they've been doing?
Sure.
Yeah, that's only two years, basically, to get this done. Two and a half.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes, S30. More spending.
Yeah. It's the meeting with all the consultants. This is another discussion, or previously, the county commission had brought to my attention that as we were looking at building space needs with the health department, emergency management, possibly the sheriff in the future, courts in the future, not knowing where we're going, that we should have a strategic plan. And that we really should, instead of just spending today, and then in two years, we spend money, know maybe a 15, 20-year plan of what our building needs probably are going to be. So, I was asked to send out a, I guess, a request for information or qualifications to some firms. And I sent it to three different companies that we have either knew about or have worked with in the past, or have been working on right now. Two companies replied, which are SJCF and GLMV. They both replied. The other company did not think they had the time to get this done. And they didn't have the people at that moment to get this done and started this year. So, they declined sending any information in. The, based, there was a committee that met and looked at the information provided. And that group thought that with some of the experience from SJCF, they've done, I believe, the same type of work for Cedra County, or working for Cedra County and possibly other counties, that they were the best fit for this kind of strategic work. Their amount is, I believe, $45,000 to do this. Or not to exceed $45,000. Again, it's hourly, and it may not be that much, depending on how well the meetings go. They would have meetings with various departments to look at. Would be EM, emergency management, health department, IT, K State Extension Office, Public Works, Register of Deeds, Sheriff, Treasurer, EMS, Commission and Administration. We included EMS on here because the two facilities that are not at the hospital, even though EMS is a hospital function, those facilities are by contract Reno County, I guess, buildings or facilities, and we're responsible for them. And with part of the ARPA money, $200,000 going, $260,000 going for the Arlington EMS station. We thought it'd be good to make sure that, have that included, looking at the needs for EMS, or if there's additional needs. There are currently in the space at the health department that need some work. So, that's what the proposal, the recommendation, recommendation to go with SJCF. And this would come out of general funds money, general fund money that we have available.
Does this include any cost-benefit analysis? Of just, you know, okay, we're gonna rearrange everybody, and that's gonna save the county money, because we're gonna...
It's not listed in here as doing that, but we can definitely talk to them about that.
I would much prefer something that shows us that we're gonna, you know, this work would actually be more efficient or create efficiencies than to just, you know...
Okay, I think we need to do this. In the last couple of years, we've had proposals to the county of this building, this building, a different building. We've looked at different places. I don't think we have the knowledge to know where we should be in two years, five years, and 10 years. And I think that this document that they're gonna provide would go a long way towards giving us a plan. I think the only caveat I've got is that we've spent millions, and I think it's been spent well, on the existing courthouse. We're thinking of spending more money on the courthouse, on remodeling and so forth. And I think as this study is being done, we should tell the consultant that we want to fully, fully use the courthouse facility in their analysis of future spaces needed. And as we're sitting here today, we know the health department needs more space. We know the emergency management department needs more space. But I don't want us to have any direction that 10 or 15 years from now, we're gonna be using the courthouse at 50% capacity. I think we can use the courthouse well, and then go to other places for these other needs. And so, I would like that direction to be given to them. And obviously, if we can afford this remodeling that we're talking about on the plans, that gives them more space in the courthouse for current usage. And I think that's important. I think the public wants us to fully use this building. So, I would make the motion that we approve the proposal from SJCF.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second by Hurst. Comments?
Yeah, I like what you just said, Commissioner Sellers, with the fact that a lot of times, they look at just, some people, some companies may look at just, okay, maybe we need to build a new building to put everybody in. And so, this utilizes the space we have, which goes along with, I think, what you said, Commissioner Friesen, is the ability to use what we have cost efficiently.
I might make one other note, that this may be, I think, in their scope of work to research public-private partnerships. You know, there's a lot of development going on downtown. There's no reason we gotta build our own building just for us. You know, if there's a way to leverage a developer's work already and save both of us money, if we're gonna be moving people around, I think we ought to study that as well. So, hearing no further comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
I suppose, yes. Randy, you're up again.
From my report, in my report, I have the financial report, and then monthly reports. I won't go over the monthly reports unless you have questions. The financials, just pulling those up. Wanted to highlight that I think all departments and funds are in good shape right now. We're about, this was report, was about 75% of the year expenses are done. Of course, we always have month 13 for things that come in in January and February. But I wanted to bring one thing to attention, on the county clerk. The revenue here, the $20,000, that revenue is for the revenue-neutral rate cost that we have to send out to all taxpayers for their RNRs for all entities. The state of Kansas agreed to pay that back for the first couple of years. So, it was not only in Donna's expenses, but also in reimbursements. And we have received that check, and it was a little over $19,000. So, the estimate for $20,000 on revenues and expenditures was really, really close. But the state did pay us back for that one. And then, just to, even though the motion's already, just to highlight what we have in the general fund, courthouse general, the capital improvement and outlay, that 1 million, that is for that renovation project. That's this year's budget. There was just under $1 million from last year that was put in reserve. So, we're close, right around $2 million going to be available for that project. Hopefully, it comes in well under that. We don't know. I think the estimates six months ago was 1.4 million. So, we'll see what that amount is. But I did want to highlight that that's where that available money for this year is. And that'll also be the line item for any improvements in the veterans room to make it ready for five commissioners next year. Will come out of the same line item. So, that will take a little bit away from the courthouse space renovation available, because we'll use some of that for the veterans room downstairs. Any other, any questions on the financial reports? Other items I had?
I have a question on a monthly department report.
Okay.
Is this the time to ask that?
Yes, yeah.
There's a statement by the ARCAT director that they've ordered decals for, to put on the bus shelters as far as when the buses are gonna be there. You know, I've been on this for a year. It was supposed to be done September 15th. I'd like you to get with her and find a date that when this is gonna get done.
Any other questions on the monthly report? Is that it for you, Randy?
The only other things I was just gonna mention, just so you're aware, KAC's next week, Monday through Wednesday, and I will be out of the office at that conference in Overland Park. And then, I wanted to bring up a issue, just to make sure the commission supports this direction. It had been brought up, well, Don had been working on the water line to Yoder from Hutchinson, city of Hutchinson, and our architects, or engineers were working on that project. We've kind of put them on hold as there came up a question about the industrial park that the chamber's working on, south of South Hutchinson, and whether the $1.2 million from ARPA money given to the chamber could be used to help for the water line cost. And then, one water line coming from Hutchinson, also then moving over and going to Yoder. I think I mentioned this in one of my weekly reports to the commissioners. Wanted, before Don and I get too far into meetings with the chamber and the city of Hutchinson, and possibly city of South Hutchinson, I just wanted to see if the commission is on board with this or prefers just moving forward with the Yoder project.
Personally, I think it makes a lot of sense. If the development down there, all of the land's been purchased, planned on. We talk about shovel-ready. Why not go under the river once, go down there, if it all works out? Okay, everybody's in agreement. It makes really good common sense to me to do the one line down there, utilize these funds that we've got available for that. We've dedicated that, pretty much, depending upon what company comes in. But I think it certainly looks to me like that should be a considerable, good topic between the county and the chamber myself.
Are you recommending that approach, Randy?
I recommend having the conversation. Now, I think some engineer estimates originally the chamber had received was water lines maybe over $3 million to get down there. So, this may just be a very small portion of that, may not be feasible. I'm not sure how we finance the other part of it, or who finances it, if it's a special district. If, I mean, I think there's a lot of conversation, but I do think it's a good step to at least see if we can do that.
How long do you think these discussions would take? Because I agree with Commissioner Hurst that if it's an appropriate, feasible thing to do it at one time. But in my opinion, we need to keep moving to get the Yoder water thing solved. And so, if we're talking about 45 days to get a decision of whether you put one little pipe or one great big pipe in, I would be for it. If you're talking about six months... If you're talking about six months, I, I think that's delaying that Yoder project too long.
And I think we could start the conversation in the next couple of weeks and see if it's going to be a, a decision or something that can take place relatively quickly, preferably this year or early part of next year, or if it's something that's going to take us into the middle of next year without a decision. And then, we can kind of adjust based on that.
So, you'll report back to us in a month or so about where this is headed?
Yes.
This might be a good opportunity for a city-county partnership. If we're going to do one, it'll make a difference whether you go down, say, towards the industrial, planned industrial area or whether you go down Yoder Road. They're both are going to require a directional change for part of that anyway. I think it's a good thing to get started discussing, seriously. And if we're going to spend money to do to get the Yoder, maybe that cheapens up with that three million, part of that to go in one big line down there and then cut across. I don't know. But I think it's really good to pursue that venture.
And we also, just for clarification, also, we'll need to make sure the City of Hutchinson, as they're perfecting their water rights, I think in the upcoming years, that they have enough water for this project. So, we'll talk to make sure we don't just assume that City of Hutchinson has the water. I think they do, but we'd have to hear from them if that's available. That's all I have from that part.
Commission reports.
I was going to say, I didn't have anything, but it's been a while since we've had a joint city-county luncheon and I'd maybe like to have another one of those before the end of the year. You think we could do that?
Yes.
At least to ask?
City's Colonel, contact the city and see if they'll host one.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Mr. Hearst?
Yeah, I, I haven't got this sent yet to Deborah and Denise with the childcare and Aubrey. And, but I had occasion to be in Sioux City this last week and was, had occasion to be in the Mercy One Hospital up there. And they provide a public partnership, private partnership and with an existing childcare facility. And the hospital in that case was, was subsidizing their employees, both full-time and part-time, at a hundred dollars a week. They were using an existing childcare facility to get that accomplished. So, I thought that was something that sure need, you know, would be of interest to the childcare facilities as well as our efficient use of ARPA funds. That's all.
Thank you. Just as I got a few comments here. One, this is a map that I've asked this county staff to create and you can take a look at it. This is an area that was mostly destroyed in, in the Cottonwood complex fires and there was, there's an issue here associated with a single, single egress here. And it is interesting because it actually shows that there's a, an easement or a right-of-way that exists here. It's just not, it hasn't been, um...
Used.
The, the road hasn't been created, but there's, there's parcel space for it. So, I thought perhaps we, we ought to consider something on that, whether to order it to be done or likewise. I don't, this isn't an item on the agenda. I think maybe you could give Randy some feedback on, on what, what you'd like to see here so we can develop an agenda item. I think there's a dispute amongst the landowners here as to whether these are, these are public roads. The county believes they're private roads today. And so, I think, you know, the county's kind of taking a hands-off approach and that may not be the best process for the safety of this, this neighborhood. But I'll just say, if we've got this, you can take a look at it and provide Randy some feedback on it.
What's the two colors represent there?
They're on here.
Oh, they're on there, okay.
They're called local roads. I asked them to rename them private roads, but they're private roads, right? These are, this is private roads, which is really a, an unfortunate situation because, you know, we can't really, in its current form, you know, require anything or the township isn't going to do anything. And so, this is a real safety risk for this area at the moment with, with such significant roads that are utilized by the public, that are, that are designated to the private adjacent landowners. So, I, this is not a good situation here today. I'm not sure how, how it got to be that way, but I had a landowner ask me like what, what the county's view of this is, and so, I'm going to give this to him once we change this to private roads here, just so he knows. But it's, they are in disagreement on that issue. Like, they think these are public roads and we think they're private, so.
I'm glad you're bringing this up because I think it's something that could be easily ignored at this point. And we have the same issue five or ten years from now that we had last year.
Well, we'll get it on the agenda if you can give Randy some feedback on your initial thoughts.
And Commissioner, for clarification, the reason we call them private roads is because, I think it was back in the seventies, maybe, they were supposed, there was resolutions passed, they were supposed to build these roads up to township standards. They never did that. And so, the township never took over those roads. They're not county roads because they're, they're not paved, they're not one we take care of as township. But township doesn't take care of them because they're not up to their standards and they were never actually created as township roads because of the process that was followed to get those to township standards. We, I don't know the cost estimate Dawn's here, but it's probably going to be a lot of money that would most likely be, unless, unless the county has special funding, would come from maybe a special district out there, the landowners paying for that, those improvements over time.
They would have to create their own special districts to get that done. The county has no involvement with regard to that, this township situation, we can recommend. If they take care of their trees, they don't have that problem.
Period.
Well, it needs to be settled. If it's not our responsibility, they need to understand it because I don't think they do at this point.
Well, but I think you're bringing up a subject that needs to be discussed at the county level. And just as Dawn Britton was successful in saving South Hutch so much money on that recent bridge that was done, the county has expertise on these things that could tell these people about what they're looking at as far as dollars and so forth to see if something positive can happen. And, and what I like about what you're bringing up, Commissioner Freezone, is the fact that we're just not ignoring something that's going to be an issue down the line, that at least needs to be discussed. And that district says that we don't want to create a district and we don't want to pay two thousand dollars a year to create a decent road.
Yep.
It, it needs to be documented that the county government has tried to help the situation.
Okay, well, we'll keep working on it. Randy and I talked about the veterans' room improvements. I don't know if you got an update on that, but I, we went down there the other day and I couldn't believe it. There, there are windows on two sides of that, that room that have been covered up. And I think we're, Randy's going to work on a plan to remove the walls and get the windows back. So, unless there's objection there, he's, they're going to continue to work on it. I think, it doesn't sound like it's going to be ready by January. And so, we'll probably have to meet back at the annex for a while with the five commissioners.
We might be able, and I think part of that depends if we, what we do with the ceiling. If we don't mess with the ceiling, except maybe replace the drop ceiling panels, maybe make them more modern, cleaner, maybe change some lighting. I think we can maybe, I don't know if we'll have it done by the end of the year possibly, but if we try to raise that ceiling, we're going to have to redo all the ductwork, the HVAC system and other wires, cables, plumbing that's there. I think that would take many months and a lot of money. So, it's kind of, from the commission, do you want us to go down that path to change the ceilings and really look at what that costs? Maybe two hundred thousand, maybe a half million. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing numbers. We don't know how much work is involved until we would hire, again, we would have to contract with an architect and then electrical engineers, different people to see what can be done. Or we can make it look, I mean, we're going to change carpet also, but we can change the panels and the ceiling, change maybe the lighting and make it much better than it is now, along with removing them, moving those walls back to, to allow for the windows to show.
Well, just to frame this up, I mean, we're, we were going to do something I would call not even half as good as what we're trying to do downstairs. We're creating a room, multi-purpose room, that's actually going to be used throughout the month rather than twice, twice a month right now. And so, I think, you know, the five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars that we're going to create to create this kind of floating room in the middle of the foyer here was never a great idea, in my opinion. To put two hundred thousand dollars in a room downstairs that is utilized all the time already, that the commission can also use, makes a lot of sense. And so, my encouragement to Randy was just to do it right because that, that room is going to be one of the more utilized rooms in, in the courthouse. That was just, I, you know, I agree, we don't have to change the ceiling, but taking the walls out, getting natural lighting in there and making it, modernizing it, I think is worth, worth the money, especially if it's saving us creating just a room just for ourselves.
Kind of like the idea of maybe changing just the ceiling tiles, because I don't know that six inches is going to make much difference or whatever, eight, twelve inches, but I like that idea of doing the rest.
But I think they do need, they do need an electrical engineer to look at that just because of, there's lighting, there's AV, electrical, I think that room needs that, that upgrade. But it's still, I, I think it's absolute complete efficiency and cost savings to just abandon what we're doing up here and put it towards a multi-purpose room downstairs.
And then, that comes back in with Commissioner Sellers and you can run it with regard to when they look at our space utilization, that can be out of that and we, they can look at just what we can utilize on this floor. Don't you think?
You okay with that?
I have not looked at the room and seen what you're concerned about, so I don't have an opinion at this point in time. I was under the understanding that it would be ready January first for the five commissioners. So, I'm hearing news today that is new to me.
Well, why don't you take a look at it and consider whether even doing it right is worth the delay? So, the, the Health Department strategic plan was scheduled for two weeks from today. I'm not going to be here, so I'd like to move that into November if we can. Unless you guys want to continue, which would be fine.
Well, is it movable, Randy?
I can check.
And aren't consultants going to be here?
She was, they were going to be here, so I can check and see if maybe the first meeting in November, if she's available to be here for that meeting.
I think we do have five Tuesdays in November. Maybe you could, will you be here the, maybe we could have the first Tuesday instead of the, will you be here then? If that's possible to move, rather than to do it the twenty-ninth or have the, if we're going to have an extra one. I don't know that we need one, but...
Yeah, I'd see if maybe it's the first meeting in November if possible.
The first meeting would work.
Eighth, eighth of November.
I'll check on it. Then I, I'm not convinced we need to do that for four hours either. Randy's really twisting my arm on that.
I think the length of time will depend on how much dialogue, interaction the commission and staff has kind of about that strategic plan and where the Health Department's going with goal, what health services.
Well, I was thinking about that the other day. Are they going to give us some information ahead of time?
Yes.
So, that we're not trying to digest the whole thing in the meeting?
Yes. You will receive information in advance and then there'll be kind of an agenda kind of set up, kind of overview of the Health Department, what they do, what they're mandated to do, what they're, do with their accreditation, kind of the stakeholder groups that they met with last month, what those groups thought are needed from the Health Department. Go over kind of the strengths, weaknesses, threats and opportunities the Health Department views and then set, set some goals for what, what they do with public health in the next few years.
The only other item I had written down here, I see Ron Vincent's here, the septic waste plan or kind of revamp that we've been talking about, I think it kind of got on the back burner and appreciate Commissioner Hearst, you sending some notes on that. The thing that I'm, I'm a little stuck on, and maybe you guys could provide a little feedback as to whether to, you know, push this back to staff initially. I think Randy and I talked a little bit about giving staff another try to take input from the, you know, what the public's already provided, what the commission has, and then taking another shot at giving us some recommendations before we create like a, an advisory board, see how close we can get. I'm okay if we want to do the advisory board. I just feel like if we focus on making some changes to the, the program, we could get, get there without it perhaps. But, and then my other thought was, do we put a commissioner on that? Because I think it might get, no. I'm, I'm okay with it. I, do you have any opinion, Randy?
Well, obviously, one commissioner on that committee is really speaking for themselves, but if there's one of you that has strong feelings or a lot of information that you've known, that you know about this, I think it's positive. But again, it would be representative of that one commissioner, not the full governing body.
I would look at that as being more or less of bringing back to the total commission, no matter who's on it. Bringing back the total commission, maybe a report rather than anything else. And I, I kind of like the idea of, of an advisory board on down the road to cover that. I know at one time, there was a committee going to get together at one time, Ricky requested that, and maybe that's where we start at first.
How about we do this? How about you guys get a succinct list on one page of, of changes that you think you can make to make this process better? And if one of them is creating a committee, then bring it back to us. We'll, we'll get this thing off that center from there. Don't, don't send us a ten-page report. It's like, I want, I'm talking personally here. there. Don't, don't send us a ten-page report. So I want, I'm talking personally here, like what I would like, if they don't agree with it. But a short list, like here's the top five to ten things that we can, you know, make a better process out of. I think that will go a lo, a long way. And then after that, we can kind of iterate with the advisory board if we need to. But I think you, you know, at least Hearst and I have like three things that would make huge difference. So I don't know where Commissioner Sellers is, but can you do that?
I can do that. If you think of anything else, you guys can individually email me. I, Commissioner Hearst, I know where you're at on, I think I've got your report. So Commissioner Sellers, you had emailed me at one point, but if you want, have thought of anything else, you can let me know.
Okay. Well, that's all I had. Unless there's anything else?